Counsel Barton.
Present.
President Counsel Cahill.
Present.
President Counsel Capano.
Present.
President Counsel Calucci.
Present.
President Counsel Crichton.
Present.
President Counsel Seatt.
Present.
President Counsel Floyd.
Present.
President Counsel Lozey.
Present.
President Counsel Neff.
Present.
President Counsel Phelan.
Present.
President Counsel Trahan.
Present.
President, eleven, present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to do things a little out of the ordinary on our agenda this evening. And what I'd first like to do, because today, as everybody knows, is the anniversary of 9/11, and a day of remembrance, I'd like to call up to the podium to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. George Fitz Henry, the President of Lynn Veterans Council. If you'd all please rise.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call to the stage representing the Lynn Police Department Lieutenant Fee, Sergeant Donnelly, Sergeant Donegan, Officers Colley, Officers Kim, Officers Teresian, Officer Torres, and from the Lynn Fire Department Chief Carmody, firefighter Paul Hammerhand, firefighter Kurt Taylor, and firefighter Kevin Wilkins. And if I could ask firefighter and fellow city councilor Good and Fuzzy Barton to come to the podium. Thank you.
Could we have a moment of silence for the victims of 9/11 and their families?
I'd like to call to the podium to say a few words on behalf of both the Lynn Fire Department and the Lynn Police Department on today's solemn occasion, Chief Carmody.
Eleven years ago, time is flying by, it's not just trying to remember public safety personnel one day a year. These gentlemen can put on the line every day. We never know when something's going to happen, like what happened 11 years ago. So, it's nice to be remembered, it's nice to honor people that put their lives on the line that day and be able to say, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. from surgery, and again Counsel Floyd's brother, who recently passed.
We need a motion to accept the minutes on July 10th in August.
Follow fair, opposed. Motion carries. Counsel Calucci, do you have a motion to suspend the rules? For what purpose? Recognize Girls Inc. Thank you. If Deb and Sarah Leian, if I'm pronouncing that right, thank you, would please come to the podium. And please, thank you. I think as most people know, Girls Inc. is a wonderful part of the Lynn community. And it would never be what it is without the leaders, that the participants in all the programs, and the examples that they set, and the people that are involved, and they do it out of love, it's not a job that. And it wouldn't be the program that it is without the youth who are committed to the program and an obvious dedication to the City of Lynn. So, on behalf of the whole council, on behalf of Counsel Calucci, who's going to say a word or maybe we'd like to recognize Girls Inc. this evening for the great work that you guys did. Counsel Calucci.
Thank you. You've got your own right now, Buck, and you have full support. If you need us, you call us, we'll be there for you. Do us some shit, kids.
So, on behalf of the Lynn City Council, we have a City of Lynn Citation to Girls Inc., a part of the solution, in recognition of your dedication, hard work in developing young minds in programs for the youth of the City of Lynn. So, on behalf of the Lynn City Council, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'm the Executive Director at Girls Inc. of Lynn, and it's just, it makes my heart sing to go to work every day, and not only work with such a fabulous staff, but with the youth. And I want to tell you a little bit about how this one project came about. We received some seed money from United Way for a program they have called Youth Ventures, and our girls got together and thought, what are we going to do with the funds? And they thought about the image that Lynn has, and as we all know, sometimes Lynn doesn't have the best image out there outside of Lynn. And we all know that that's not true, because Lynn is a fabulous place to live and to work. But sometimes it's painful to grow up in an area that, you know, doesn't have a good reputation, so they wanted to do something about that, to start to let the world know and the community know what a great place Lynn was. So, they had a logo contest. They went out to the high schools and kids submitted their logos, and they came up with this T-shirt here, "Yeah, I'm from Lynn and I'm proud of it." And what I like about the T-shirt is it has a little bit of attitude to it, which I think is great. And what they did with, not only did they do the proceeds, so now the word is out there that Lynn is a great place and we're proud of that, but they used the proceeds to seed other monies for nonprofits. So, they actually have this grant application process that, and they have the criteria, they have a format, so that other agencies go ahead and apply, and then we give the money back to those agencies to go out and do what they work. So, thank you very much. If you're interested in buying the T-shirts, we have them at Girls Inc., Raw Arts, and also at The Y. So, thank you so much, and you all look fabulous.
If I could ask the rest of the council to come on up, I think it'd be a great picture with the young people in the shirts and the people from...
(inaudible). Give her four rats away. (laughing).
I think Terry is getting her camera.
(inaudible). (inaudible). And they're selling like coffee. They're selling $10, and it's sold over $1,200 worth of... (inaudible). 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 Counsel Lozey, do you have a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, sir, President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to honor Kim Gavirino, resident citizen of Lynn, for swimming the English Channel.
Counsel Lozey.
(inaudible). Kim Gavirino. (applause) (inaudible). 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 And I just want to say a few things before Kim does. The English Channel is 21 miles, but that's not how far you have to swim because of the currents. They generally, the swimmers have to go sometimes double that distance. And here's some facts, quick facts that I got off the Internet. 811 people have swum the English Channel since 1875, and that's not a long lot of people. By comparison, if you look at how many people have climbed Mount Everest, there were 2,000 people that climbed Mount Everest, so that's quite an accomplishment. Unfortunately, seven people have died crossing the channel, and it's only a 10% success rate. That is no easy feat to swim the English Channel. You know, you're dealing with jellyfish, pollution, that's a boating channel that sees 500 ships a day. Temperature of the water averages between 55, 60 degree water, saltwater, it's very difficult, and it's not easy. And the median age for swimming the channel is 30 years of age. I've known Kim since he was a teenager. This guy, I'll put him up against a 32-year-old any day, but more importantly, it's his character, and I think Kim is just a great example, epitomizes what a Linner is, and I'm happy to honor Kim and his wife and his team for that accomplishment, and I just, I'll turn it over to Kim. Thank you, Kim. One second, Jim. (applause) I saw him a day after he swam the channel, and I said, "How long did it take you, Kim?" He said, "Like over 15 hours." I said, "I can't be to stay away from 15 hours." (laughing).
I don't know where to start. I'd like to first say, my heart goes out to the victims of 9/11. That is first and foremost on my mind. But I'd also like to thank the City Council, Mr. Lozey, Mr. Calucci, Counsel President, Mr. Phelan. My grandparents lived on the corner of the Linway and Broad Street in the early 1900s, so I do have a long history in Lynn. I grew up in the Highlands. Lynn is always, will always be in my heart. I'm a probation officer in the district court, and every day, I just want to make this a better city to live in, and I think that the Lynn Police Force and the City Council do a great job every day, and I really mean that from the bottom of my heart. And I just want to thank everybody for inviting me here tonight. This is absolutely a dream come true, and I don't exaggerate that one bit. I've always dreamed, as a kid, to be able to swim the English Channel since I was in the seventh grade, and read a digest article of somebody that did that. I can't remember who the person was, I might remember it virtually, but for me to be here in front of everybody tonight is truly a dream come true, and I really mean that. And I just want to thank first and foremost my wife Amy, who has put up with this dream over the last couple of years. (applause) We could have bought a couple of cars and come on, right? That would be special, and it would have been possible without my swim coach, Craig Moon, who I added to my team. (applause) He was really a better swimmer than me, just so happens I got a boat, and I was the first one to cross the English Channel before him. So, I just want to thank Craig, and I just want to, my heart goes out to Lynn as a city. Once again, I just, I grew up here, I grew up in the Highlands. My grandparents are from here, my father had a barbershop in the corner of Summer and Clive Street. My mother worked in the Ralco. I grew up in the Highlands my whole life, I loved the city, and once again, just to be able to be here is a dream come true, so I just want to thank everybody. (applause)
And Kim, I'd like to present you with this award, recognition from the Lynn City Council for your accomplishment, and this is absolutely unbelievable, and like I said, I really couldn't beat it. I just want to thank everybody. (inaudible). Thank you. (applause)
Communications. We have two communications from our on the mayor. The first one, dear councils, I'm hereby appointing Ms. Janice Sarulee to the Off Street Practicing Commission. Ms. Sarulee's terms effective immediately and will expire September 11, 2015. Sincerely, Judith Lanning and Kennedy Mayor.
What's with the council? What's your move? Second, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seatt.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, 11 yes. Second communication, dear councils, I'm hereby reappointing Mr. Stephen Martin to the Lynn Housing and Bartering Development Commission. Mr. Martin's term is effective immediately and will expire May 25, 2017. Sincerely, Judith Lanning and Kennedy Mayor.
Groove, motion, discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seatt.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Neff.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, 11 yes. Public hearings. Petition to Market Square Exchange and Emporium Matthew Kupuzi for a sign permit at 32 Market Square.
Open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Here, folks. Counsel President, I am here to help you with the Emporium, located in 32 Market Square. This is the only last year I grew up, so painted signs for the holiday theme. From then, I painted sales signs, cash flow signs. I did not realize that I was in, I needed to apply for a special permit, so tonight I'm here to apply for that permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counsel Capano.
Yes, I went down, I met with Matt, he has this place there, and I saw the signs, and you know, he just wanted to take them down right there, which I didn't think he needed to, he just didn't know. And there's nothing objectionable, objectionable of, you know, the signs that he has up there, and I just like to make a motion to grant.
Motion made, seconded, discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seatt.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Neff.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, 11 yes. Next petition, petition to enablement development association to allow the construction of a single-family home in a business district, lesser use, at Lot 9 Burns Street.
Open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Phelps, I'm representing Neighborhood Development Associates. Neighborhood Development Associates is requesting the City of Lynn City Council to allow the construction of a single-family home on the corner of Burns and Rivers Street. It's currently a vacant lot located in a business district.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counsel Capano.
Yes, I'm aware of the property here, and it's part of an ongoing plan, they've got some new houses going in across the street, the cause area, and there's going to be some improvements to either street, river street down there, and this fits right into that, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made, seconded, discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Neff.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, 11 yes. Petition this week, food carts, Desiree DiMuglio, for permission to operate a mobile food cart on the public way at the Lynn Coniments and various streets throughout the City of Lynn, Thursday through Sunday. Hours, Thursday and Friday, 10:30 a.m. to 8 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, 9 a.m. to 8 p.m.
Open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, City Council, thank you for hearing my petition. My name is Desiree DiMuglio, and I have a food cart next week, these food carts, and sell push carts, hot dogs, bottled water, chips, and canes. And I'm requesting permission to operate on the Lynn City sidewalks, later set area, and also, maybe only a different brand, and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Stein, I work in the Office of Community Development, and I act as the Facilities Manager at Manning and Fraser Field. Petition, as I read it, in the Lynn item, included Manning Field area as one of the places that the petitioner would like to sell product, and I speak in opposition because the concession stand at Manning Field supports high school, youth football, booster clubs, and also supports the upkeep of Rock Manning and Fraser Field. So, I would think that would be counterproductive to what we try to accomplish there with those nonprofit organizations and the maintenance of stadiums. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Brian Lozey, I'm the President of Lynn Child's Youth Football, and you know, I called wind a bit earlier today, and the only opposition I have is, you know, that's a good source of income for all the leagues that play at Manning Field. I'm also one of St. Mary's boosters, which they really honor also, so that's why I'm here in opposition, because it would be counterproductive if Mr. Stein's...
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody else in opposition? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. What's the wish of the council? Counsel Cahill.
I would make a motion, I'd make a motion to deny.
For public, for public discussion. Motion to deny is being seconded by Counsel Lozey, Counsel Cahill, the floor jumps.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask Mr. Stephen Julius your questions.
Sure.
Good evening. Mr. Stephen Julius, I have one question for you. Do you have these types of carts and other communities that you have dealt with before? What's your experience?
Yes, I've operated one overseas in a different country, and also I'm aware that they have these sorts of food carts in Austin and Cambridge and Harbor Square and other places. I agree with them that it would be counterproductive to their fundraising, so I feel easily not, that's not a problem for me. Mostly, my thing is I want to be near, like the Red Commons and other playgrounds areas that don't have these sort of nonprofit. I was really aware that this was going to interfere with their sort of fundraising, which I'm more than happy not to go there. It's not...
Do you live in the area?
Yes.
Do you feel...
William Street.
William Street?
Woodman Street.
Woodman Street. And do you already possess a car?
Yes, yeah.
And whether you haven't been able to...
I have a permanent city of repair as well. I was just trying to get more.
Well, I think, if I, I mean, you don't, I don't think I remember getting a push cart request I could afford, I think.
Yeah, I've heard everyone says that.
Cars. So, I think we're more interested in maybe discussing what other communities do, but we really have a policy in the city for safer proportion cars. What months?
Mostly during the summer. I was really trying to, because it's never been done before in the city, I was having trouble trying to find out which applications that I needed, so I got the mayor's help, and she kind of directed me towards which ones I was struggling with, which is a special moment, but mostly during the summer, so with this application, I would maybe get like one or two weekends the rest of the season, and then it's too cold, and so I would most of year next summer.
I guess I'd just, a little bit of Capano, because I didn't, I didn't move to deny, and I tend to vote against the permit tonight. I just, I think that in your application, maybe you need a little bit more refining, a little more definitions, and probably as a city, we do what other cities do, we would turn to the push carts, because we haven't dealt with the situation before, and any dealings with the push carts, it could balloon into something moving in the push cart.
I'm sorry, but I seriously doubt that.
You'd be surprised when I ask this. Close the public hearing. Counsel Kapana.
Yes, I'm aware of the property here and it's part of an ongoing plan. They've got some new houses going in across the street, the cause area. And there's going to be some improvements to either street, River Street down there. And this fits right into that and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Settle.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapana?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Neff?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trhan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes. Petition is weekdays, food cart desirati Vigilio for permission to operate a mobile food cart on the public way at the Lynn Coniments and various streets throughout the city of Lynn, Thursday through Sunday. Hours Thursday and Friday, ten thirty a.m. to eight p.m., Saturday and Sunday, nine a.m. to eight p.m.
Open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, City Council. Thank you for hearing my petition. My name is Desirati Vigilio and I have a food cart, next weekdays food cart. And sell as a push cart, some hot dogs, bottled water, chips, and canes. And I'm requesting permission to operate on Lynn City sidewalks, later set area. And also, Maggiore, the playground, and...
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Stein. I work in the office of community development and I act as a facilities manager in Manning and Frasier Field. Petition, as I read it, in the Lynn item included Manning Field area as one of the places that the petitioner would like to sell product. And I speak in opposition because the concession stand at Manning Field supports high school and youth football booster clubs and also supports the upkeep of Rock Manning and Frasier Field. So I would think that would be counterproductive to what we try to accomplish there with those nonprofit organizations and the maintenance of the stadiums.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Brian Lozey. I'm the president of Lynch Rogers Youth Football. And, you know, I called one of it earlier today. The only opposition I have is, you know, that that's a good source of income for all the leagues that play at Manning Field. I'm also one of St. Mary's boosters, which they really honor also. So that's why I'm here in opposition, because it would be counterproductive if Mr. Stein's...
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody else in opposition? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. What's the wish of the counselor? Counsel Cahill?
I would make a motion... Make a motion to deny.
For public... For problem, oh, discussion. Motion to deny is seconded by Counsel Lozey. Counsel Cahill, floor jobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, if I could ask Mr. Vigilio some questions?
Sure.
Good evening. Mr. Vigilio, I have a question for you. Do you have these types of carts and other communities that you... That you've dealt with before, from your experience?
Yes, I've operated one overseas in a different country. And also, I'm aware that they have these sorts of food carts in Austin and Cambridge and Harbor Square and other places. I agree with them that it would be counterproductive to their fundraising. So I feel easily not... That's not a problem for me. Mostly, my thing is I want to be near, like, the Red Commons and other playgrounds areas that don't have these sort of nonprofit. I was really aware that this was going to interfere with their sort of fundraising, which I'm more than happy not to go there. It's not...
Do you live in the area?
Yes.
Do you feel...
Woodman Street.
William Street?
Woodman Street.
Woodman Street. And do you already possess a car?
Yes, yeah.
And whether you haven't been able to...
I have a permanent city of repair as well. I was just trying to get more.
Well, I think if I've... I mean, you don't... I don't think I remember getting a push cart request I could afford, I think.
Yeah, I've heard everyone says that.
Cars. So I think we're more interested in maybe discussing what other communities do, but we really have a policy in the city for safer proportion cars. What months?
Mostly during the summer. I was really trying to... Because it's never been done before in the city, I was having trouble trying to find out which applications that I needed. So I got from Mary's help and she directed me towards which ones I was struggling with. I don't know which is a special permit. But mostly during the summer, so with this application, I would maybe get like one or two weekends the rest of the season and then it's too cold. And so I would most of the year next month.
I guess I just put a little bit of con because I didn't... I did move to deny and I intended to vote against the permit tonight. I just... I think that if your application maybe needs a little bit more refining, a little more definitions. And probably as the city would do with one of those cities, we would turn to the push carts because we haven't dealt with the situation before and any dealings with the push carts. It could balloon into something moving in the push cart economy.
I'm sorry, but I seriously doubt that.
You'd be surprised when happens this.
Yeah. I understand that, but I mostly... I've already spoken with the Department of the DPDW and the DCR. And they've advised me that if I wanted to do it near these, like, the Commons and the different playgrounds, that I can't go on that property, but I can be on the Lynn City sidewalk. And I'm more than happy with that. That's fine.
I'm just, I guess personally, I'm a little unsure about this with all the work. So I'm going to continue to vote tonight. But I wouldn't mind working with you in the future and trying to figure something out.
Thank you.
If you ever figure, maybe there's something to be done.
Yeah.
Counsel Lozey.
Mr. President, through the chair, Ms. Vigilio. I have the same sentiments as my colleague, Counsel Cahill. In addition to that, you do have requests for various streets around the city, including playgrounds. And we kind of have a problem in certain areas with playgrounds, with nearby residential areas. So I think you really need to refine your application. And frankly, we've turned down applications for various food trucks, for instance, in my ward along Magnolia.
Oh, in Magnolia Playground?
Yeah.
Yes, this is a push cart and I have a truck with a trailer and I actually bring it to the location and park my truck. It's very small. It's only a six by four. And it has a number.
Again, I have developed knowing enough information on it. This is the first that we've had any kind of communication on it.
Okay.
And I did second that motion and I am going to vote to deny. You know, certainly the door is open and police communicate. And again, I would try to refine so that you specify the area you're interested in, most interested in, and probably working with that counselor is my suggestion.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Counsel Ford.
Mr. President, thank you. I hear Counsel Lozey. It seems as though the Commons may work. I would have a little bit of concern about Barry Black and the times and dates because of the Barry Black concessions being, which still opens in worst Little League field. Seems like there's nothing on the Commons. On Barry Black, I've been told as an illegal food cart, which I've placed at the card a number of times. And so there are times when Little Leagues aren't playing, that field is very active and covered really well. Again, like my colleague said, I'd like to kind of hear the idea that the commission side that hate to take anything away from the kids that's supporting the Little League and stuff.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
So I've really gone the road to look at him.
Any other discussion from council? There's a motion on the table to deny. A yes vote would be to deny. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapana?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Palucci? Yes, Counsel Crichton? Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Neff?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trhan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
Mr. President, I think we can get her up for Judy Caddell. Maybe she can find us blocking. Is that a good idea?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Petition to allow group of apartments, Brian Britters, for permission for a sign permit at eighty-seven Park Street.
Open the public hearing for anybody in favor.
Assistant Counsel Brian Britters from McNeese Sign Company. Evening. I'm here to request on behalf of the owners that... The new owners that the Lynn Coniments, part of their beautification and identification program located at eighty-seven Park Street for a free scanning of one percent as well as two cycles.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody who should speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counsel Crichton.
Mr. President, through you, to the members. I'm going to make a motion to table this petition itself because I'm necessarily in opposition to it, but rather that this is the first I've heard from the petitioner. I would like to view, I guess, the site of the location and to get a little bit further information. So again, not in opposition, but would like to review this a little bit.
Motion made, table, seconded, which is not available. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapana?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Neff?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trhan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes. Petition... Sorry. Petition to allow night hawk acquisitions, Paul Solik, for permission for sixteen rental apartments in the central business district at one twenty-nine, one fifty-three Broad Street.
Open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Jody, with the neighborhood policy. We're asking for a special permit to renovate a vacant building, sixteen apartments. We're still speaking.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. I'm Seth Albaugh, Seventh Central Square Unit three oh three, also president of the Downtown Neighborhood Association. Those of you who know me might be a little surprised that I'm about to say something positive about this organization, but I'm glad that they want to improve the Broad Street area. The project, as I understand it, is a great upgrade and I'm looking forward to it. I do have a couple of reservations that I would like to express, but I'm up here because I am in favor. And what really has me excited is that I read in the item that they're talking about Artist Live Workspace as part of the project. Now, I know they were talking about that for Mount Vernon Street as well. And it didn't come to fruition, but I hope it does this time. If it's built to specs and it's rent that artists can afford, it would be a great boost to the scene of the downtown. So let me share some of the other concerns. I know Night Hawk Acquisitions is Mayo Group and I'm glad that that's, you know, out in the open. But so I'd like to ensure that inspectional services is on top of things from beginning to end on this project. As someone who purchased the Mayo condo, as someone who has friends who have been Mayo tenants both residentially and commercially, I have some reason to be concerned. And Mayo does have a mixed reputation in the downtown. But again, in favor of this project on paper, it looks wonderful. But many of us have experienced difficulties. And some of the corrections we've had to make to bring our spaces up to code have come out of our own pockets. And again, I'm concerned because if the tenants of this new project are unhappy, then they will be unhappy living in downtown later. And it does reflect on the reputation of the neighborhood. So again, I think this falls more on inspectional services to make sure, preserve the code, to make sure that Mayo slash JM Realty slash Night Hawk Acquisitions is a good landlord. And, you know, if it's a quality project, we'll get behind it and we'll do happy marketing for you, just in spreading the good word. So I hope that's the case. I look forward to seeing it done. I look forward to both the improved facade on Broad Street and the work done on the building behind Broad Street, which could be gorgeous. I see a lot of potential in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Close... Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition, excuse me. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counsel Crichton.
Mr. President, through you, to the members, I'd like to speak in favor of this petition. I had a chance to walk the site with Night Hawk and the Mayo representatives. I think it's another great investment in downtown. In addition to the sixteen rental units that were closed, as mentioned, now a vacant structure. They have plans in the future to improve the facades, commercial space along Broad Street, which I think will sign nicely to some redevelopment in the downtown as well as across the street on Broad. So again, I commend the downtown residents for being involved in this process. No big concern in the past. And we'll make sure that the city stays on top of their end of this. And I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Settle.
Motion made, seconded, to approve. Discussion, Counsel Cahill.
Mr. President, through you, to the members. And I would offer a friendly amendment to Counsel Crichton's motion discussing this matter with the importance of that to this district, the importance of downtown and both of it in our history with the Mayo. That ISD Director Mike Dunne personally oversee that project before any other superbia is issued, and he is on for that building itself and issues it himself.
Thank you, Counsel Cahill. I imagine Mike Dunne would be on board with that, so we'll accept your friendly amendment. If he has any issues, I'll direct him.
All right. Motion made, seconded, on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment only? On his own amendment, Counsel Cahill.
Please direct ISD Director Mike Dunne to contact the local ward council. He'll take the issues in the local ward.
Mike Dunne is part of the same friendly amendment. On the amendment, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapana? Abson, Counsel Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Neff?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trhan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
Any further discussion on the main motion as amended? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapana? Abson, Counsel Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Neff?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trhan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes. Next petition, petition to massage company Elaine Sullivan for permission for therapeutic massage, Monday through Sunday, nine a.m. to eight p.m. at one sixty-one Eastern Ave.
Like to open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor. Anybody in favor? Anybody in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counsel Seer.
Thank you. The reason why I'm waiting to see him is going to be in honor of that establishment. I'm still nervous to get on the podium, but I've known him for years and I've walked around the neighborhood. I think she'd be a great asset. I'm motioning to second.
Motion made, seconded, to approve. Any discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapana? Abson, Counsel Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Neff?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trhan?
Yes.
Yes, ten, yes. Petition... Public hearing is to be set down. Petition to Metro PCS L L. Brian Lozey, for permission to add one dish he intend to existing rooftop wireless communication facility in Kings Beach Towers at one thirty East Denana. Petition of American Building Technologies, remain stretcher for permission to transform a vacant second and third floor warehouse space into three apartments and one office for existing business. Office hours, eight a.m. to five p.m. Monday through Friday, two sixty-three Weston Avenue. Petition of Horizon Robin Garcia, for permission to place approximately two hundred and sixteen feet of underground conduit on Tremont Street and approximately seventy-five feet of underground conduit on Market Street. Petition of East Coast International Church, current length and permission for a sign permit at fifty-seven sixty-five Monroe Street. And petition of D R J, for the director Jimmy Dunn, for permission for a sign permit at eight seventy-three Weston Avenue.
What's the wish of the counselor? Motion be set down. Open the public hearing, second, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapana?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Neff?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trhan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes. We have unfinished business laid over from the public property meeting of August fourteenth. We have several orders, I can read them all together and if we could separate them if you like. Order to allow the property at seventy-six Oakwood Act to be redeemed by Richard J. Record, administrator, personal representative of the estate of Sandra S. Buckley, owner of Record with stipulation that all taxes, fees, and fines be paid within thirty days. Motion to approve a banner from September eighth to October thirteenth for the Friends of the Council on Aging for the annual fundraiser. Order that the May be authorized to execute a lease agreement between the city of Lynn and the Lynn Community Elder Services for the use of Riot Cliff Lodge. Order that the light apartment draft the auto damnant for a portion of land along Blossom Street be set down for a public hearing before the Lynn Planning Board, the Lynn City Council.
Motion to approve, all four. If anybody wants to take one individually, please speak up. Do I hear a second discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Kapana?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Crichton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Neff?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trhan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes. And we need a motion to adopt permanently an ordinance to include the floodplain districts in the city of Lynn's previous due date, Wednesday, March fifteenth.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
in the city of Lynn. It's previously adopted with the range in fee on July tenth.
Uh, motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Button?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trhan?